Your line.
Should I start? Okay. Well, good morning, everyone. And thank you for the opportunity to listen to you all today. My name is Dr. Lorna Rivera, and I'm here today
Bon dia.
with my colleague, Dr. Harden Coleman, and we are both members of the Boston School Committee. You can find the documents for today's session posted on the committee's webpage, which is bostonpublicschools.org/schoolcommittee under the February 13th meeting link. We'll also post a link to the documents in the chat, and the meeting documents have been translated in all of the major BPS languages. The committee is pleased to be offering live simultaneous interpretation in Spanish, Portuguese, Cabo Verdean, Haitian Creole, and American Sign Language. After I finish introducing the interpreters, we will activate the interpretation icon, the little globe that you see at the bottom of your screen. You can click the icon to select your language preference. And in order to access this feature, you must update to the latest version of Zoom. And you can visit support.zoom.us if you need to get that updated version. So we're going to first start with our Spanish interpreter. He is Juan Bernal. Juan, will you please give Zoom instructions in Spanish?
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Rivera. Good morning, everyone. My name is Juan Bernal. I am the simultaneous Spanish interpreter. I will be interpreting for those in need of interpretation. I will now explain how to access the interpretation feature in Spanish. Muy buenos dias para todos. Mi nombre es Juan Bernal. Soy el interprete para español. Voy a interpretar simultáneamente el evento de hoy. La forma en como van a accesar la interpretación tiene que buscar el globo redondo, que parece un globo de la tierra en la parte baja de la pantalla, seleccionar el idioma español para que puedan escuchar mi interpretación simultánea. Si están conectándose de un teléfono celular, tienen que buscar los tres puntos ubicados en la parte derecha superior de su teléfono y seleccionar la interpretación en español. De igual manera, si no ven este icono en la parte baja de la pantalla ni en el teléfono, tienen que bajar la versión más actualizada de Zoom. Tienen que ir a www.zoom.us/ download. Thank you very much. Muchas gracias. Please proceed, Dr. Rivera.
Thank you, Mr. Bernal. Gracias. Our Portuguese interpreter is Isabel Alves da Silva. Will you please give Zoom instructions in Portuguese? I think you are mute, Ms. Alves da Silva.
Yes, but they told me I must do Quevedo Creole. You want me to do Portuguese now?
Could you, I have an Ana de Cruz that was going to do the Cabo Verdean.
Okay, I do Portuguese now. Then I change to both?
Are you doing the both?
Then I can change to Portuguese. It's no problem. I speak Portuguese too.
Thank you.
Okay. Eu sou Isabel, interpreta de português de Lisboa ou de Brasil. Se você precisar de mim para interpretar qualquer coisa, você pode entrar na sua tela de telefone, ter um globo, e ali você põe a mão, e assim ele vai acessar você para a zona de conversação que eu vou traduzir. E se você tem um Zoom que está atualizado, você também pode atualizar o seu Zoom no zoom.com. Assim você vai ter a versão nova, e assim você pode ouvir simultaneamente quando estou conversando. Obrigada. E se você precisar, você pode também levantar a mão que eu posso ouvir e posso traduzir para você. Obrigada. Obrigada, Dr. Rivera. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alves da Silva. I believe you are also our Cabo Verdean interpreter. If you could please give Zoom instructions in Cabo Verdean. Thank you. Lena, not sure if Ana, is Ana de Cruz doing the Cape Verdean, the Cabo Verdean? Or is Ms. Isabel doing it?
Just a second. So Isabel is doing Portuguese. Our Cape Verdean hasn't shown up yet.
Oh, okay.
Sorry for that.
No, no problem. Thank you for clarifying. All right, so then we will go to our Haitian Creole interpreter, who's with us here today, Sergio Saint-Hilaire. And Mr. Saint-Hilaire, will you please give Zoom instructions in Haitian Creole?
Hi, good morning, everyone. My name is Sergio Saint-Hilaire, Haitian Creole interpreter. Moi dit bonjour à tout le monde. Capitaine, c'est un s'ajout hier. Moi, il est Sergio, et c'est moi qui ai interprété Pono. Et que c'est un plaisir pour moi pour traduire tout ça qui dit dans ce salon pour traduire Pono en Creole. Et que si nous avons besoin d'entrer en contact, en ce qu'il y a, on va faire un globe qui est bas, on va cliquer sur lui, et c'est lui-même qui permet tout entrer. Tout seul, il a besoin de dire, on va capter là, et puis moi, je m'attire pour. Merci, Dr. Rivera, parce que l'été présentait pour moi. Merci beaucoup.
Merci beaucoup. Our ASO interpreters with us today are Kelly Muscat and Linda Gregorio. Thank you all for assisting us today in our listening session. We will now activate the interpretation icon at the bottom of your screen. I'd like to remind everyone to speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. We're here today because our duty as a school committee is to represent the vision and values of our community. Today's community engagement session is one of the many ways we go about doing that. What we aren't here to discuss, or what, excuse me, what we aren't here to do is to discuss current issues, such as school reopening, policing, and other matters. If you want to discuss those issues in the context of our five-year goals and guardrails, this is the conversation for that. But if you want to discuss those issues in the context of getting a resolution to a current issue, we have other venues for that, including our regular committee meetings. But to help improve our present, we have to make a plan for the future. So we're going to look at some of the ground rules, and you're seeing the slide there. While BPS is making great strides, there are always areas we can improve. This spring, we engaged in extensive community outreach efforts to develop our current strategic plan. Since the completion of that plan, the school committee has selected two sets of measures from the strategic plan that we will monitor closely every month. From a set of priorities that represent, excuse me, I just lost my spot here. So sorry. From a set of priorities that represent the community's vision for what students should know and be able to do, we call these our goals. And from the strategic plan, we selected a set of non-negotiable community values that must be honored while we pursue the goals we call these our guardrails. We do this not to replace the strategic plan, but to heighten our focus on it, to increase transparency and share accountability for student outcomes. Today, we are excited to share these goals and guardrails with you and hear your feedback. Dr. Coleman?
Great. Thank you, Dr. Rivera. So good morning, everyone. So we want to talk a little about what we mean by goals. So goals represent the community's highest need and highest level of vision for what students should know and be able to do. And I want to repeat that. We're looking at, we're trying to identify what, organize around what students should know and be able to do. The school committee selected goals that focus on: one, early literacy; two, achievement for English learners; three, achievement for students with disabilities; four, critical thinking with math, science, literacy; and five, college, career and college readiness. Because the school committee that focuses on everything is a school committee that focuses on nothing, one of our hardest tasks has been to narrow it down to only five goal areas. But as we grow student success in these areas, they will have a significant, we believe they will have a significant impact on students' abilities to be successful elsewhere as well. If you are, let's see. The second issue that we want to address and get your feedback on are guardrails. Guardrails represent the community's values and our non-negotiable expectations that must be honored in all the school systems work. The school committee selected guardrails that focus on: one, student voice and family engagement; two, community partnerships; three, equity and opportunity gaps; four, diverse and effective staffing; and five, social, emotional, and physical supports. When these guardrails are honored, they help create the conditions for student success system-wide. Once the goals and guardrails are fully adopted, as a school committee, we will redesign everything we do to monitor these priorities and focus our work around them. We will redesign what our meetings look like to focus more time on ensuring that the goals are met and the guardrails are honored. We will focus a greater percentage of our time each month on monitoring student growth to ensure we are moving in the right direction. We will evaluate the budget on its alignment with the goals and guardrails. We will evaluate student superintendent based on the complement of goals and adherence to guardrails. The community's priority vision, our goals, and the community's prioritized values, our guardrails, will be at the center of everything we do. With this information in mind, we'll begin with our first question. Please remember that our intention is to create a space to hear from as many people as possible today. For this reason, we'll ask people to keep their responses and comments to under two minutes to make space for other voices. We had to divide this conversation into three parts. So Lorna, can you start us off, please?
Yes, thank you. So we'll see here the question, the first question for our discussion in this next period of time. And I'm sorry, I'm just trying to move my screen here. So which of the five goal areas is most important to you? And how can Boston Public Schools best partner with families and communities to accomplish it? And let's just again remind you of the five goal areas. Early literacy; second, achievement for English learners; third, achievement for students with disabilities; fourth, critical thinking with math, science, and literacy; and fifth, college and career readiness. Which one most resonates for you and why? How can BPS do a better job of partnering with families and communities to accomplish this goal? And what we'd like to do is ask people to raise their hands or put in the chat that you would like to share. And yes, we would like to hear from you now. Who will be the first to share? Here.
I'll watch it. We're both college professors, so whenever we get this silence, we're willing to reach out and call on somebody.
Anyone? I'll give it another minute. I would like to remind folks that we do have a a Google document that you can also put your questions in in case something comes up. Okay, so it's on the website, and perhaps we could, is it in the chat already? Yep, the form, the meeting documents are in the chat. So why don't we move on to, for now, the second question, and of course, we will have time to come back if folks end up getting inspired.
Great.
Dr. Coleman?
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. So the next question we have is: which of the five guardrails areas is most important to you? And how can BPS best partner with families and communities to honor those guardrails? So this is a quick reminder. The guardrails are: one, we want to guide our behavior by how we elevate and amplify student voice and increase family engagement. We want to complete our work in partnership with our community partners. Three, equity and opportunities gaps should be a primary focus of guardrails to our behaviors. Four, diverse and effective staffing. Five, social, emotional, physical supports. So we want to know which one of these resonate most to you and why? And how can we do a better job of partnering with families and communities to honor that guardrail? So who would be willing to share or respond to that? Now remember, because we have a, we have a smaller group and a little bit of time, so we could also think of this as dialogues. If you have questions of us for clarification's sake, we would have time to entertain those as well. So while you're thinking, I want to, I want to address one of the issues that we've heard a lot in public comment, which is the relationship between this conversation and the priority of closing achievement and opportunity gap. And so we hope what people are seeing who've had that question, that we think of closing opportunity achievement gaps as one of our guardrails. So as we attempt to achieve the goals we've established before, we want to evaluate the fidelity of implementation as to whether or not that, our efforts, let's say, in terms of improving the academic performance of our students with disabilities, that we are evaluating that and how that closes the gap between their performance and others in the district. Same thing for ELL learners, same thing for Black and Latinx students who are not ELL or have disabilities. So we want to, so that is going to be a constant part of our fidelity. Thank you. Monica's pointed out that early literacy is the one that we, that she would want on us to prioritize as it sets the basic groundwork for all achievement going forward. And so if we can unlock the issues of reading, then that provides all students with access to learning. And so that's what, and then there are a lot of partners throughout the city in which we can engage in that. Okay, thank you, Monica. Dr. Rivera?
Okay. Well, we're going to move then into the third question for our listening session today. And that is, what is one thing that you would be open, you as individuals who've joined us today, and maybe in communities you represent, what is one thing you would be open to doing to support our students? How would you like to be involved in the success of Boston Public Schools and our students? What is one thing you're willing to commit to that would support the success of our students in Boston Public Schools? Who will be the first to share? Me. Any thoughts on that?
Dr. Rivera, I'm going to jump in as a, as a non-school committee member. And one of the reasons, one of the, part of the work that we've wanted to accomplish over time at my college and school is how we can be more effectively engaged in supporting the progress of student accomplishment in Boston Public Schools. So I'm working with a colleague and the Office of Equity and Strategies to focus on how to lift up and the implementation of equity roundtables, school-based equity roundtables as a central tactic for the district to be focused on creating gaps, identifying practices that facilitate schools to close the gaps. So my colleague and I are committed to, we're going to be creating a work hopefully with a set of principles around how to implement the equity roundtables with fidelity. It's one of the words, so they're really effective. So that's an example of outside of the work generally of the school committee, where I intend to commit more of my time as a, as a member of the community in addition to the work of serving on the board. I know that you do similar work
Yes.
as part of your professional and personal commitment of the district.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Coleman, for raising that. You know, many of us on the school committee also, you know, we are parents, and we have children in the district. We are educators ourselves, researchers. And I certainly am really committed to working with Dr. Sylvia Romero Johnson. And I see that we have, you know, at least John, you know, Mr. John Mudd with us on the call and really advancing, right, the English learner's piece. Whether that's, you know, again, expanding some dual-language programming, really doing some, you know, evaluations of schools that are doing really great, you know, work so we can, you know, learn from what best practices are happening and be able to really expand opportunities for bilingual education under the Look Act. So that is something that I'm really pleased to see that out of the strategic planning, that English learners are really being centered here, as well as students with disabilities. So again, hoping that others will join us in committing to some of these goals and guardrails.
No, Dr. Rivera, that's a, this is like a great thing that I think we have to lift up and identify is that part of the community is going to be really focused on the goals, right? So what do we want ELL students to know and be able to do? And that that's their focus. And the other parts of the community are really going to be focused on how we're going to get there. So, and that's a good example of that. You, you've identified goals you have for a particular population in the district, and I've identified from the garden that the tactics and the process of how to get there. And that those are not, that the collaboration among those who are goal-oriented and process-oriented is what we're trying to drive forward with this work as a committee. And this structure, I think, helps us identify that and be clearer about that. So that, thank you for kind of highlighting that. That really kind of put that clear to me in a way that I hadn't thought of it before.
Thank you. Thank you for your leadership. So...
I think we're, I think, I think, I think people who have come to hear what they want to hear. Oh, here from, here we go. And I said, how, how, great, great question. How will we be measuring the progress for goals? How do we ensure the students are assessed, evaluated holistically and reflect diverse backgrounds and talents, not just based on test? For example, my kids attend a dual-language school that, but much of the district and state assessments are in English and ignores all the skills that the students have learned in Spanish. What, that's a great, I mean, you've asked a question that we're asking and is being asked nationally. We have a history of limited, both sides of accountability around either numeracy or English literacy, and we're not looking at what the whole child should acquire. And we need to reevaluate our assessments in light of that. And I think that's a question that, in fact, the, as we, as we identify the measurements for how we're going to track our progress in these goals, that is a conversation the district is having right now. So I highly encourage you to engage with the School Quality Task Force and join there, because that's, that's a place explicitly where there's opportunity for community members to listen to that, to be part of that conversation. That's the focus of how do we know what's working well for schools and sort of the community? What are we using? That is the question that that task force and hopefully turning over to committee addresses. So I encourage your engagement there to help push us on how to find more holistic useful assessments. I know the superintendent is committed to that process. Certainly, we support that, that we need to find good ones because there's those, and I'll put myself on the table that as much as I believe in whole child holistic assessment, I want to see some numbers that we can really track our trends and progress and hold ourselves accountable. So how we put those two together is going to be a significant conversation. So in the School Quality Task Force, there will be school committee meetings where we'll talk about this explicitly. So we want you to attend to those and give us feedback. This is, this is an iterative process. We're going to really work on saying, we're going to try things. If it's not working, we've got to be ready to change. We can't get fixed into using ineffective tactics to achieve these very important goals. So thank you very much for that question. I think it's, I think it's critical to our progress as a district.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. And if I could add similarly for the public to know that the meetings for the English Learners Task Force are also open to the public, there's opportunity to do testimony there as well. And what happens in these task forces is there is a sharing of deeper, you know, engagement because we'll have central office folks there, leaders from the community. And, you know, that, the purpose of the English Learners Task Force is these questions around, again, how are we doing assessments? How are we monitoring outcomes? And, and we always have more in-depth presentations and analysis of data and outcomes in those settings. Whereas, you know, at the school committee meetings, you know, they're like these larger presentations, but they're infrequent, right? Whereas these meetings are, you know, regular. So another opportunity for folks to contribute. And thank you, you know, Haruna Hoso Okawa for sharing that in the chat. Thank you.
Great. So we want to thank you so much for joining us today. By April, we plan to use this feedback to update the school committee's work plan. That'll be used to monitor progress of the next five years. The entire goal and guardrail monitoring process takes place during public meetings of the school committee. So here's what you can expect next in the process. We will continue listening, and we will then adopt a work plan for the school committee this spring. We will also post a summary of this community input on our website. So you can see the feedback you provided and how we have used that feedback in our decision-making. If you have more to add, please complete the feedback form. And that's posted on our website at bostonpublicschools.org/schoolcommittee. Your input is greatly appreciated. So we want to thank you very much for your time, and hopefully you have a good game. And for John Mudd, go Gunners. We hope for an Arsenal win this afternoon.
Yes, like... Yes, likewise, I echo Dr. Coleman's sentiments. So thank everyone, especially our interpreters, for joining us today. Thanks to Liz Sullivan and Lena Parvev for always, Parveks, excuse me, for organizing and making these meetings possible. And thank you for your hard work. So best wishes to everyone and please do share your feedback. We look forward to it. Thank you.
Take care, Dr. Rivera. Have a good weekend.
Have a good weekend. Bye.